Okay, welcome back to the May twenty first Regular Council meetings and the time is seven P M. And motion to call meeting order.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Yes.
Carry. Okay, item number three, not going to report out of close at this time. Uh, item number four, adoption of the agenda. Any amendments, changes, or?
Yeah.
We're all forward to adopt it.
Without the agenda.
Okay, motion to adopt.
Move.
The agenda, second.
Second.
Okay, and changes, amendments?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Mr. Fos, carry. Okay, we'll move right to public participation. Uh, anyone in the gallery like to speak? Please rise.
Hello.
Thank you.
Please rise. Hi there. Neil Craig. Um, regarding the twenty two, twenty twenty two annual report that's now posted, uh, some points concerning the portion called mayor's message. Please put to rest this idea that change grappling with the preservation of traditional practices is the problem we have with the current administration. We welcome change when it comes with competence, fiscal responsibility, transparency, accountability, and municipal knowledge. What will we have had, what we have had instead is a previous fully experienced and competent municipal trained staff who were fired or made to feel so uncomfortable that they fled. Laboring overspending and the speeches and grandstanding that continue, that continue on even in this annual report. Why is a twenty twenty two annual report referencing many things that are pertinent to twenty twenty three reporting? Regarding the auditor's management report, the information in the auditor's report should be profound, should be of profound concern to every resident. Over four months passed between the first audit presentation in December and when on April sixteenth, it was presented for a second time. What occurred during that four month delay? Any comments? Marcus, Neville, Jamie? You.
Well, I think the it's the common knowledge, um, that the delay was caused by the auditors. If I'm looking at the report. Um. But nothing much has changed since the December report.
Okay, next place.
Simply, I'm here.
Please start recording.
I, I can't, because usually when I'm teaching at a university, when I go over there, I, I feel that I'm teaching, but I'm not teaching. I'll explain that the reason that I don't use it. It's a bad habit for me. Just follow up with the email that I have sent to all of you, along with the pictures. No response. What is the response? Why? What, what do you have to do about it? I have sent the email to everyone. Would you please respond?
Canvas, this is the time you, you have two minutes in which you can, um, voice.
This is my.
What you would like.
Yes.
And, uh, we've been advised that we're not to get into back and forth interaction. Uh, so if the councils would like to answer, um, I'll open that up, but, but there is no requirement.
Listen, I respectfully, I believe that I had the right to ask you what happened to the response to my email that we, allowing, allowing me the picture after one and a half years that I asked you for the parking committee. If, even though if nobody wanted, uh, go for it, for the parking committee, what we can do, we cannot just put it to the bar. Because after ten P M, right now, we are, um, many people come over there. And I have sent the picture that they, they have party. Uh, no, not party. Okay, what is your response?
So, I, I'll, I'll comment since I, I called the task force back in December and we spent ninety days and
Yes.
and, uh, and I think it was
It was fast.
very productive.
But productive.
And those recommendations have been put in front of council and it's council's decision if council would like to put together a committee to, to, uh, either, uh, move or develop some of those recommendations. Uh, so far, the council has not been able to strike or has not struck a parking committee.
Okay, if you don't want to, if they don't want to respond to the parking committee, can I ask that, would you please put the barrier that after ten, they don't come over there and just make this miserable life for us? Is it okay? Is it something that's simple?
Um, what I'll do, uh, Canvas, is I'll, I'll bring those recommendations, uh, back to council and also to and, and also to staff, because there's many of those recommendations that, that could most likely be moved on, uh, even with staff and Mr. Blackwell, he helped me out on this. There's some decisions that, that staff can make.
Yes.
And just before Mr. Blackwell gets going, we're, we're over the two minutes, so I'm gonna have Mr. Blackwell make a comment and then we're gonna move to the next. And then we're moving to the next speaker.
Go ahead.
Canvas.
So, so to, to your question, yes, some of these things are operational, some of these things are, uh, bigger, there are broader complications associated with this. This is a tricky issue because, uh, of the nature of a public beach is more public. And so one that we have to sort of have a fulsome discussion with community before starting stripping access to it. In which case, now who starts to move around council? Council will have to decide whether or not that's what their appetite is.
Can I just add that that would come with significant budget implications, which would then be the purpose of council to discuss.
Not that much budget, if you wanted, they can get for the budget even though.
There's
Okay, Canvas.
More time, electric gates, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars.
Just to check.
That is.
Can I make a comment?
Paying some money.
Um, council writer, and then we're gonna wrap this up, Canvas.
Sorry, no flight attendant, not to this topic, but with the previous residents spoke to, the delay of four months is something, uh, in the audit is something that I am also appalled by. I cannot say specifically what caused it, uh, but, uh, I think it'd be fair to say that it was not, uh, at the direction of council or anything that council, uh, wished to see. Um, and I think that probably a good number of us at this table regard that delay as unfortunate and, uh, tried to prevent it from occurring.
Okay.
As far as I'll go.
Um, we're gonna call a recess in a moment, Canvas, if, if I can't get you to sit down, so politely ask you to sit down.
First of all, thank you, and just, hopefully, we can have any kind of barrier.
Yeah.
Simply, and I, I can help with
Okay, thank you.
Amount of that you have, Mr.
Thank you.
Just suggest, council, this is unwise to debate issues brought on the fly. Support councils and local governments can get into trouble by misstating things or stating things incorrectly, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would suggest council uses this very much the same way that I would in a public hearing. And that is to listen to the community of what, what their concerns are. Community could direct any questions and asks through the, to the chair. And if the chair isn't, feels that responses are required, then the chair could direct staff to provide respondents or whatever the case may be. That creates a bit of more structure, that's my advice. Creates a bit more structure and sort of keeps everything on side, stops things sort of straying a little bit.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blackwell. Anyone else in the gallery?
Good evening, um, council, um, Mr. Blackwell and everyone online. Um, my name is Leslie Nolan, I've been a resident for twenty eight years. Um, and like many community members, uh, received and read processed numerous reports uh, that were, uh, received around the village this past week, um, in particular, the draft report or the draft audit. I'm gonna reiterate the same thing that, um, Yale, um, said, but I, I, I do have a very specific question, uh, with the bar suite. Um, the annual report begins with a mayor's message and a byline that says on behalf of the council. Um, it's been a long time since we've heard a mayor's, read a mayor's message. Um, it's been many, many months, actually. And so I wanna say, you know, the letter calls out others who have found themselves grappling with the preservation of traditional practices or the good old days was sort of in there and I found that very divisive. Um, and I take that as, you know, bylaws, policies, procedures, fiscal responsibility and accountability and the thing we're teaching grade eight and grade nine students in math class today. Right, all this responsibility. And I, what I was bothered by was that this letter was written on behalf of council and I have known many of you around this table for years and it doesn't sound like you. And so I'm gonna ask you directly, does this represent you, this letter? Council Abbott, Twitter, kind of, uh, I don't know, Council Rodden's here, um, because it doesn't sound like you. And that's my question. Is that, is it, did this letter represent you?
I'd like to ask a comment on it. Um, first point is it was the twenty twenty two report. Um, two of us here were part of that council for ten months.
Yeah, just a letter though. The mayor's message that I want.
Yeah, my, my, my message.
Okay.
Um, and two of us here were on the previous council, I was there for the whole of that year. Um, those were here for a couple of months. Um, that, and I've spoken to the other counselors or ex counselors about that, that reported about, um, about that, that year. Um, and no, they, they're all affronted with that mayor's message, it does not represent the ten months prior to this council coming in and I can quite categorically say, I do not believe that's on behalf of, beyond behalf of council. Um, we have two weeks to receive input on that, we'll establish the first of that and then we, we get to council to accept that, that report on, uh, eighteen June. An excuse.
Should I just, are you handing this so that it can form part of the record?
Please.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'll hand it over.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just, since I'm speaking here, I'll, I'll say that absolutely not, that mayor's message in no way represents at least my voice. Uh, so I'm, uh, disturbed that it is purportedly on behalf of council.
All right.
Um, and, uh, I think that's pretty clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we're putting this in director, will we set?
Please.
Okay, um, maybe there's a few things, I, I've reached out many times to people in the community as well as, as council members. And, uh, and I will say that it's, it's been very challenging. And there hasn't been, uh, a lot of collaboration, as we all know, and this dysfunction has cost the community and, and residents within the community a lot of banks. So, uh, within six weeks of, of, uh, assuming the role of mayor and also, uh, communicating with our, our council, uh, we uncovered uh, some significant, significant financial and banking controls.
Um.
And, sorry, I'll let you speak. Okay? And some of these banking controls were, as the finance and audit committee, uh, relay, a final arm fire. There were some significant, there was such as, uh, Lions Bay Bank account only had one signature for the issuance of a check. There was no bank limit on the amount that could be withdrawn or authorized by check.
And on a point of record, this has been debunked a numerous times, why are you repeating this?
I'm, I'm repeating it because it's fact.
It is nonsense.
And if somebody wants to call me on it, called me, but, but this is
You already called.
The auditor's report says that's not true, you know, read the auditor's report, excuse me.
Excuse me. Hey, we, we wanted to put things on record, but unfortunately, people aren't willing to listen to the fact.
This is way offside, okay, this is not a strategic council meeting. This is a formal meeting of local government pursuant to statutes set up by the problems of B C. This is inappropriate. There should be none of this dialogue, it should stop, it must stop.
Could, could I ask, as a point of order, that the, that the record be handed to the recorder and not be retained at that end of the table? For inclusion in the record.
Okay, we're gonna move to the next item, okay, or is there any other speakers? Yes, please take, Bobby.
Hi, uh, my name is Rebecca Kaspersen. Um, I actually have a couple of things, um, and if you'll let me go through the entirety before providing input or comment. First one is totally different direction, I like to talk about parking and traffic in the village. First of all, thank you to whoever finally approved and installed signage by the Fire Hyphen Non-Mountain today, after we've been asking for that for at least two years. However, once again, we have experienced a busy weekend with continual traffic and visitors parking wherever they please and no parking zones on blind corners and resident only spaces with zero repercussions. I know that there are job listings for bylaw and parking patrol positions, but these were posted far too late into the season. And while bylaw is helpful on its own, it's not a solution to our parking and traffic issues. Why do we continue to put visitors before residents? Why have we not implemented a registration system and improved signage? Why was bylaw not hired in a timely manner? Why are vehicles not towed when they cause safety concerns? This lack of action has added to the frustration of residents, especially those who live in high traffic areas, Bayview, Sunset, and Mountain. An election campaign promise was to improve the parking situation, but it has actually gotten worse. Can the mayor and council please tell residents what they plan to do about the situation? Not in the fall, not next year, but this hiking season. My second comment is in relation to the audit management letter. This letter identifies concerns around hiring practices, public statements around financial controls without sufficient and appropriate information, missing minutes, lack of internal controls. These are the very concerns raised by residents and those concerns were minimized and dismissed by some of you at the table. The treatment of outspoken residents, the one who, the ones who possibly voted for you, who pay taxes and whom provide, whom you provide a service to have been, in my opinion, deplorable. I note that the letter mentions that failing to support the internal control environment can diminish service quality to residents while increasing overall costs. This has certainly been the case. I hope that action will be taken to address these concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else in the gallery like to speak? Um, we're gonna go online.
We have, uh, Norma Rogers.
Hey, uh, Norma? Till I'm you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, very much so.
So, the recent B D O audit letter verified the outrage groups' concerns about financial management actions. The points were hiring key positions without seeking qualified people and ignoring employment procedures. Announcing publicly about supposed twenty twenty two financial mismanagement contrary to the facts known to the auditor. Disregarding the community charter by not completing and approving minutes for council and finance committee meetings in a timely manner. Failing to properly communicate or provide materials during the audit process causing a ten month delay and resulting in substantially increased audit fees. Personally contacting auditors and bankers contrary to the village's communications policy. These official determinations are concerning. Residents want the good old days referred to in the twenty twenty two annual report when the village easily met all financial deadlines and followed procedures. We prefer, as the mayor wrote, the preservation of traditional practices because they were rule-based, professional, and did not cost the village hundreds of thousands of dollars in wasted fees. Thank you.
Okay. Uh. Am I allowed to respond just on one, one point of the financial side?
Shouldn't.
Okay, I'm gonna take Mr. Blackwell's guidance, so I won't respond then. Anyone else online? Okay, uh, we'll move to the next item, which is delegation. Anyone, I believe we do have one delegation.
This is nice and unique. Hello, council, well, it's that time of year again. Uh, I'm here for you on behalf of the store and cafe to seek an exemption to the noise bylaw so that over the course of the summer from June one to September thirty, uh, we could seek to be granted an exemption to the noise bylaw, uh, so that we can, you know, on the odd occasion, it might be every weekend. Um, but we'd like the ability to sort of move and shitty as the weather requires and allows. Um, so, just to the people at home, um, this is the resolution we're seeking. I won't take the whole ten minutes, by the way, it seems to be on the agenda. The council grant exemption to noise bylaw number two eight three nineteen ninety eight to allow live amplified music on the patio at the general store and cafe between the hours of twelve P M midday and nine P M from June one to September thirty each year until September thirty twenty twenty six, which would be the end of this council's term. The only thing that, that is unique this year, uh, is that council can withdraw an exemption at any time, you know, if, if for proper cause and due cause. So if we're granted, uh, this concession, as we have been since two thousand seventeen, if something inappropriate were to go down, then council can withdraw for the exemption. But allowing it till the end of this council term means that I don't have to come here each year. Um, it's a bit clunky and clumsy when there's more business to deal with within the community. Does anyone around the table have any questions?
I've got a question.
Yes.
Um. I, I, I'm a little concerned about the precedent we'd be setting for, setting a multi-year relaxation. We, uh, enjoy having you, so if you don't mind showing up one year after the next. Yeah, yeah, uh, that would be okay by me. Um, and, uh, I, 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 and, and I don't know if you'd have to show up, uh, you'd probably just mail it in, but, uh, I, I'd be more comfortable with doing it from year to year. Yeah.
Well, council, are, are he concerned?
Yeah.
Bearing in mind that say for the Marina, if it decided to sort of hold some entertainment, it's kind of a lone horse town with respect to the cafe and the store, so it's a bit unique in that regard. I appreciate that if, uh, individual homeowner came along seeking exemption, it's, it's slightly more unique. So I'll, uh, you know, with, with respect, I'll maintain my request and I'll, and I'll, I'll leave my, um, uh, request, you know, in your hands.
Do you read this now? I'll try to see. It's on the period. Oh, it is, um, six, sorry, six, eight. Cool.
All right, any questions? Thank you, great.
Okay, I appreciate your talk.
Good to see you. Okay, we'll move to item number seven. We have motion to adopt the April sixteen, twenty twenty four.
Moved.
Yes. Second. Okay, any comments, questions?
Um, so, just back to my question, so the resolution of the delegation is actually at six A in the gym, which is now.
Oh, sorry, yes.
But there's another noise that's been later in the gym, we met later. We didn't, no.
Let's fly off.
Uh. So in terms of good practice, you should never make a motion on the fly like this. This should always come to staff, so staff could work through the issues, bring all of the issues to council, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That said, uh, given that this is an ongoing event, I don't think that from a staff perspective, there's any particular concern with the request in any way, shape, or form, particularly because there's any contradictions of the bylaws. It's seriously true. We're looking at the job, so should council wish to do that now? And quite frankly, it's true. But you also, uh, something strange too. Yeah. Not there. Under section twelve or fifteen. Doesn't speak business twice. Uh, that's where you simply can make a motion for that effect.
Uh, since we've got it on the top of the page, should we just go with the now or?
Well, this is, you, you can. What you do in this, combining delegation and presentation with a, with a resolution, not the end of the world, just don't forget to do you know, not the end of the world, you could do that.
Remember, did you say that a time off that?
Well, assuming that in business it was twice, you could choose whether it's twelve or fifteen.
All right.
You can do it twice if you wish. Yeah, but then we're using.
You can amend the resolutions later because you've got another one on the already.
Yeah, we could do them both together.
Do them both together.
And. You can't.
Oh, all right.
All right.
Do some discussing logistics here.
Okay, but that will move to the motion for the first set.
Uh.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, uh, that's April sixteen, twenty twenty four. All in favor?
Up in the four, no.
Okay.
Oh, um. Page nine. Um. It's nice, still. Um. Okay, on page nine. Uh, infrastructure committee. So the first sentence, I'll just read quickly, this is during the I C meeting, the committee concurred with the public works evaluation indicated any water shortage. The matter will be forward to E P C for deliberation on the next steps. Additionally, this highlights the weekly meetings on how preemptively playing for potential ground scenarios or paying for the worst case scenario situation. And the way it reads, it sounds like the I C are having weekly meetings. I think that comment was from Public Works Manager at the time, whose title was Directive Operations, um, about staff meeting. Is what he was referring to, staff meeting weekly to preemptively pay for tracks, correct?
Working group.
So my
Hot stuff.
Okay, so my, my request to change then is to make those two, they want a separate paragraph and let it lead additionally was highlighting that a staff working group are meeting weekly the rest of the sentence. Because it's not the I C.
Other than staff. It's members of the committee.
Okay. Right, it's not the I C. Okay.
All right.
With their changing.
Okay, uh, on favor with the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Fos, carry. Okay, motion to approve April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four minutes. Oh, sorry, April twenty third. Okay.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I'm good.
All in favor?
Yes.
This pose, carry. Okay, motion to approve the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four minutes.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All in favor?
This.
Pose.
Yeah.
Carry. A motion to approve the May seventh, twenty twenty four minutes.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Good.
And it's. All in question, all in favor?
Yes.
Pose, carry. It's impressive. Okay. Uh, business rising from the minutes.
I, I, I've got something, uh, business arising from the minutes. Um. On page nine of the package, uh, we see in the minutes that, uh, under staff reports, that the, uh, Brandon aid applications will be coming to the next committee of the whole meeting, which I think we will be doing. Um, just wanted to remind everyone of that. Um, and then on page ten.
Yeah, let's rock on.
Well, you reminded people of that, did you, or also reminded that, that the invitations for them to attend and present?
As provided, yes. Uh. And, uh, then on page ten of the package, also from the meeting minutes of April sixteenth, uh, there's a piece in there, uh, referring to my update on the S B T issue. Um, and it was my understanding at the time that the mayor would, uh, supply a report and, uh, any information. and any information as to the letter that he had received from the province. In terms of the annual consultation requirements, he appeared to be unaware of any letter at the time. And I believe that he was going to supply that, so I'd like that to be moved into the follow-up action list that the mayor provide the letter from the province regarding the annual consultation and a report to council as to any communication he's had with the province in terms of that consultation. So I'm asking that that be provided to the follow-up action list.
All right, if you haven't given me a heads up, I would have brought all the paperwork because I did some research on that and and there is paperwork to back that up that you, in fact, received everything from the province, so I'll bring that up the next week.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, I was referring to a letter that you had received in December.
Can I forward it? It's all of council.
Nobody has seen it, to my knowledge.
I'll bring it.
That would be great. Has anyone else seen that letter?
Cool.
I've never seen it. So, yes, if you could bring that.
That was just to remind the public, that was the project that you worked on for, what, a year and a half? That was in your court, and now you're throwing it back to me? Is that what you're doing?
No, to be clear, that there is a requirement under the speculation vacancy act that the community be consulted on an annual basis. That letter as to that consultation was provided to you in December, but we have no information as to that letter or any consultation. That's what I'm asking that you provide to this council. And that that be added to the action forward list.
Okay. Next item. Unfinished business nine A, follow-up action items on page twenty-four. Mr. Blackwell has suggested, is there any items that councillors would like to bring forward on that list?
So item three oh six was not as complete last time, so you can take a rough strip. It's more stairs, more is complete. Item three twelve was for protection areas project. I I believe with the help of the House and vice versa, I might be making some traction in finding that information, so. It's just updates. I haven't stopped working on this, still in. I have a final answer now, but I'm next one.
And any other comments from the councillors or items that you'd like to bring forward? Okay, we'll move on to item number ten, staff report C A O. Ask them to spot.
Thank you. So you will recall that there was a report in the fifteenth circuitary council with regard to for twenty twenty-four conference schedule. These conferences are local government elected official conferences, like, for example, the U B C municipalities, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, et cetera. Dashing off for attending each of these costs and so forth is set out for conferences that are included in this report. This is not every conference known to human kind that you could attend. I'm sure there's hundreds, but these are the key local government elected official conferences. One of the key conferences, of course, is the U B C M conference, where there are the opportunity to meet with various ministers. And council, that it has the opportunity through those meetings to convey any issues, desires, asks, et cetera. It's an important networking opportunity with regard to other elected officials and so forth. So all of that is set out in this report. I'm not making a recommendation per se. It's a direction. Budget that we've set is set out in that report. It's on page three. Four, I should say, as well as basically some of the costs and so forth. In a nutshell, if I were to ask me, I can see the look in your eyes. Ask the question, I would say, F C M is probably not big utilization money. Given that it's thirty five hundred, twenty dollars a pop. There's value, but I think there's bigger fish to fry relative to our capacity. My recommendation would be strategic approach for all of council to attend U B C M and a few members of council, the L N L G A conference, which has passed. But coming down the pipe, if all of council chose to go to U B C M in Vancouver, it would cost to roughly four thousand dollars, assuming that you didn't add on to the to the docket for the various tours and all these things, because that would add additional cost. If you carpool, you would save money. So this includes the cost of travel and so forth. So if you were to ask any recommendation, it would be going forward for this year. U B C M. Next year designated, you don't have to do that now. It'd be good to decide what you want to do about these conferences for twenty twenty-four, but for next year, identify who if anybody you would appoint to go to the L N L G A as well as the U B C M. For this year twenty twenty-four, you have something before you, we mentioned, is to your wishes.
Comment?
Okay. The councillor.
Yeah, I was looking at number three and suggesting that we don't want to jump on that one. We've got limited funds and we're going to break the bank on that one. So I agree that we won't be jetting off to Calgary in a private jet. And we're going to have to be very thrifty here and and pick and choose carefully as to what's the most important component of this.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I think as you said, L J has done kind of represented us. And U B C M, I think there really have been several council discussions. Assuming that's and.
So I would prefer for the council provide a resolution that X X X X council wants to know. My recommendations that all of council knows that that before that happens, that very soon, there'd be some strategic discussion about whether there's any resolutions council want to put forward to U B C M further consideration, because those resolutions, if passed by U B C M or forwarded by the executive to the province of B C for action, sell them. That's never ever action, but one lives in hope. Plus, they are currently now soliciting interest for meetings with Premier E D, E D and Minister Ba. So that's, I think it's carrying too fast. So that's that's in process now. So it can be just.
So what's the timeline?
Yes, there's early bird as well, absolutely. The cost is considerably.
Sorry, I think I was the first to put my hand up on U B C M. I still want to go, if I happen to to take other resolutions from council, or that's what they want to use in the timeline. We have come.
So comment, I mean, it was my observation on the last council that a councillor would be picked and designated to attend on behalf of council. If all of us are going, that's going to drive the cost up. Maybe we should spread our shot a bit here and reconsider doing things that way. I'm not prepared to pass a resolution as to which ones are going to be attended by whom at this point, but I think that's something we should discuss.
All right, Mr. Blackwell, your recommendation was?
I think I I of all of these, as I say, there's two that are rather key. One is the L L M L G A, that's the local government chapter of groups. You don't need the whole council. It's done. I think, yeah, I just going forward. So those are, there's two that are really key. That one and U B C M, they're because they're paired. After that, as you correctly point out, so the bigger one, the most important one, where the rubber is. There are all the ministerial duties or so on and so forth. As well as council training, number of resources that are provided is new. So there is tremendous. I've never heard of an election for sure, but ten days and come away with any comment other than that was a fantastic experience. Then I had, and I bring it back back to my. That would be my recommendation. That would, if all of council still chose, that would leave six thousand dollars in the budget with nothing else in the hopper for twenty twenty-four. At this point.
And from your experience, would it be beneficial to have more councillors there from ministerial meeting as opposed to one-on-one?
Yes.
All right, I was there last year. It was a great meeting and and conference. There was a lot of speakers and and a lot of other councillors and and mayors, so I would refer to everyone to go and I would like to go again if council chooses.
I also put my speaking as well, so.
And I think council brought him to his hand up as well.
I think that. How are your members?
Okay, there'll be a motion. If we're looking for a motion now that you, councillor, have it, please see the motion on us. Don't put that forward.
It's good to have a motion. Point pointing, which people.
Or to U B C M.
Those that express interest.
It could be just that, yeah. It could be made.
Okay. Why don't you put the motion forward now? Those expressed interest. Okay, now we have a motion on table second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Pose, carry. Okay.
My ask then is just those that have confirmed, thank you. For those that haven't confirmed, can you do so one way or the other by Friday of this week? Whether you like your name added to that list. I will then go ahead and start to look at some of the issues relative to resolutions that council then can debate to decide whether you want to provide those to U B C to the U B C M for consideration. By the way, that means some of you will have to speak to us. As well as set up after request meetings with not any key ministers, so ministers Ma, Mr. Kane, anybody else relative to climate change and adaptation. And Kane was about to use a fair excuse. So stay tuned. There's a lot of work to be done around this to have to maximize the effect that council can have.
There's lack of last year as well with the survey and two. This is function with campus staff as well.
No, that would just be the ask of council. It's typical that you have your C A O at these events because C A O supports council regarding the details, particularly around stereo meetings and other other exchanges and a lot of you serve your support system. Okay, that's for you.
Okay, I'll put a motion forward that C A O attends. He's available second. Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Pose, carry. All right, next item is item ten A two, the twenty twenty-two statement of financial information, Sophie report.
So the statement of financial information has been presented in the standard Joe's need them, but they will just so we like. So the statement of financial information, Sophie report has been prepared in the standard format. It includes a schedule of guarantee indemnity agreements, none scheduled remuneration, scheduled statement of severance agreements, which there was one, scheduled amounts paid to suppliers for his services. There's specifically details amounts paid over twenty-five thousand dollars. And then statement of financial information approval, which is signed by myself and the mayor on behalf of council. There's a management report which is in standard form and then includes the twenty twenty-two audit of financial statements. And the Sophie can be lodged with the L G D E after approval and approval of the annual report and it must be accompanied by the audit of financial statements.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chair comes a recommendation for you.
My recommendation that is that the Sophie report be adopted, approved as written. And I can lodge it with the L G D E once the annual report is also through.
Okay.
Sophie? That's a good question. I'm not sure if this has been done.
It's it's a recommendation was that it's always being signed off by the mayor on behalf of council. So there should be something.
A resolution. The financial report or the annual report, I should say, does not have to be adopted. It's just received for information. Because the mayor will be cited on behalf of council.
We're going to have to go forward.
All right, second. Second. Any comments?
No.
Okay, all the question, all in favor?
Yes.
Pose, carry. Okay, committees, mayor, parent.
It wasn't.
Oh, sorry, I've been limited online.
So why is that being limited?
Thank you. The fire chief is country and it's not available today to speak in this, so you have a future agenda.
Okay, move to item B, can be, which is committees, not from there. Items ten C, province British funding, Inspector's win spell is recommendation. Okay, and that was previously distributed, the recommendation being that council authorized the C A O to initiate key recommendations as outlined by the province of British Columbia, the municipal advisor in the office of the inspector of municipalities. Motion for that?
I'll move that.
Okay, second. Discussion.
Yeah.
Councillor.
So statements of this, yeah, this did come up before all of these on the seventh fifth, most of nothing. At the time, councils feeling that we had no important business to do then to go through all these files, changes, policy changes. And I am so firmly of opinion. Until today, we lost the key staff member. We haven't done an annual report for this year and just finished that. I didn't have any trackings for this year, but I just finished previous year. I think there's much more important business of the village needs to be done. Projects like the crack worming, the beach park come to mind as well. There will be a lot to get done with. I intend to vote no on all of these. I think you get C A O, every direction the C A O needs is to be directed to get on with the business of the village.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. So for the so if these are considered for items for council, you just need to action by by endorsing these recommendations. In so doing, it's a matter of implementation. It just means like one time permits, whether it's this year, next year, the year after. Eventually, because they've now been actioned, they can they can be picked away at. But as you rightly pointed out, there are other priorities that will take precedent over all of these. What this just does is if council still run it, it puts it in a hopper. So that so that if and when time permits.
I've got a comment.
Councillor.
Yeah, we've seen these before. I agree that we have much more important matters before us and that I'm ready to vote on.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Again, we have seen these. Some of these to me are common sense. We're going to be updating bylaws as necessary. I don't believe we need a resolution on that. Seeking legal advice to draft documents on, I believe that's already purvey of staff. Purvey of staff. Uh, the only one that sticks out to me here are the new code of conduct. That's something that we're clearly aware of, that we need work on. Which has already been actioned. And. What I just say needs to be stricken entirely is that the CRO initiated a policy to reduce the misuse of communication systems, no emails at after nine P M. So I work full time and sometimes that's the only opportunity I have to hit send. It's the responsibility of the recipient of when they want to choose to read it. I just think that's. I don't even understand why that's there.
So I.
Okay, that's the black hole.
The answer to that is, so a person in my position as an example, has to check the mails, phones twenty four seven. Because I don't know if it's an urgency or not. And so, uh, given how my life works. I'm up at four o'clock in the morning. So, uh, yeah, that the ask would be in a situation like that. Is it set, adjust your output messaging so that it doesn't send to me, it it send it not at luck at night. But it doesn't actually leave your inbox until eight A M or whatever time is the morning.
I've heard that you can see that. That's where my challenge is, is that I don't know. I I won't email her after my ask.
That's where that comes, that doesn't come from me, but that's that's the would be my rationale.
Okay.
Can I make an amendment to the motion here? Uh, and that would be in the interest of moving things along and getting some business done here. That we, I'm I'm happy to consider items ten C two through nine. In in one vote.
Okay. The amendment's on the table. All right, I'll comment since everyone's got around the table here. So these recommendations were put forward by the province.
Sorry, you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Thank you, second.
Also.
Okay, uh, these recommendations were, first of all, we had the province come in for a five month period. To oversee and to help us out and provide guidance and advice and so on. Uh, they followed it up with a a recommendations and a report in August after they had left. Uh, then the inspector of municipalities followed up with a letter in November of twenty twenty three. These were all based on on what the province and their advisors. Had seen within our council and and staff. And these are sort of rules that play in the sandbox and a framework framework for us to 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 maybe. Uh, work together a little bit more cohesively because. Obviously, we've had a lot of dysfunction. So, uh, they put these forward as recommendations. They're there in front of us. Uh, you know, we can either dispense with them. As some of the councillors would like to do, or or allow staff to start to implement them on the timeframe that staff sees and prioritizes this. But quite frankly, we haven't had a lot of success here in in overcoming some of these obstacles. And I think these these recommendations are a step in that direction. So, uh, that's all I have to say. Okay, um, any other comments on the amendment? I'll call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Okay, motion carried.
Sorry, I'm not clear what that question was.
I think that was the dispense with pretty much all the recommendations.
Hang on, just to be clear here, that was to consider items ten C two through nine in one. Elsewhere. So we've now passed that amendment, so now we need to consider. Ten C two through nine and vote on it.
Okay, any other comments on? On the balling? Okay, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Of what?
Of the list ten C two through nine.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay. Can you record that? Mayor was in favor. The other councillors were opposed to the recommendation for the province.
And it seems that we've lost councillor Donovan, Sophie wasn't here to present her values.
Okay, we'll move to item number D, emergency fire and rescue dispatch report. It's on page sixty four. That's for information. Blackwell? Any comments?
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move to item number eleven A, noise relaxation, uh, it's. Foundation that Craig had spoke through earlier. Uh, recommendation that council grant.
This is, this is for the hall, for.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, we were gonna, okay, we were gonna take care of Craig's.
Under twelve.
Under twelve, okay, apologies. Uh, noise relaxation request sixty, recommendation that council grant an exemption to noise bylaw. Number two eight three nineteen ninety eight to allow for the event with amplified sound between the hours of eight A M and eleven G M at the broken hall. For the following date, June fifteenth, twenty twenty four. We have a motion.
I'll move that.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Sound good.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Okay, new business, back to Mr. Jordy's. And the motion was for council to grant the exemption to noise bylaw. Two eighty three nineteen ninety eight to allow for live amplified music on the patio of the general store. And cafe between the hours of twelve P M and nine P M from June first to September thirtieth each year until September thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
I'll move that.
Okay, second.
I like, I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Can I propose a friendly amendment? I'm of the same mind that we ask all committee and community groups to come annually to ask for grants. Funding from the village, and I don't think it's onerous to come back annually to ask for the same exemption.
Sorry, Blackwell, it's not a amendment?
Oh, sorry. An amendment.
I'll second that.
Well, I I get to do that.
Okay.
I believe you have a chance.
I'm just kidding.
I defer.
I don't know what's kidding.
Okay, we'll call the question, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, carried.
So the main motion is now carried as amended?
Yeah. And bylaws, correspondence.
I'm confused. Am I the? You want the correspondence versus? Okay. Yes.
Sure.
I would say that from the general correspondence, take that as received. Uh, we've had resident correspondence, we have had discussion this evening. From the gallery in regards to what we have here now on the record. Highway noise and safety committee. I might ask for. The CRO to provide some insight as to councillor, council representation on that. I, my feeling is that that is truly a staff matter and not a.
Sorry.
The, um, request to have councillors sit on a highway noise. From Mr. Montgomery. And that it was suggested that that is not perhaps purvey of councillor and a committee, but it was more of a staff function. That was my take from your response. Would you care to?
Blackwell?
Thank you. So, uh, there's two ways I can go. Council in a community based. Group, committee, whatever the name is you choose to use. The council can choose to appoint one or more members to sit in as an observer, to share information. Not participate for sale, argue that any issues or whatever is there to share, to convey information. To the group and back to council, common. The other, the other, which may be just as good, extra street names, which is just as good. Is that any member of council can just attempt to to observe. I think that's a good thing to do myself. That's how councils are able to stay attuned to the issues. Unfortunately, life space small enough, and that's very easy to prosper. So I think, uh, just maybe casually, so any member of council can choose to show up to hear what the committee's. Concerns are, ideas are, there's a great way to go. Uh, whether or not the staff get involved is whole other issue. It's a function of capacity, right now it's. Are you standing on the best here?
Yes, understood. Okay, I will respond to Mr. Montgomery and see if there's going to be meetings sometime soon and make myself available to sit in on that. And then we have. Uh, it but it's not an official committee is what you're saying. It's more of a.
Just a suggestion for good. Uh, when you find out that date, you might, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Um, understood. And then discussion, um, bylaw concerns, which I imagine that we are doing. All that we can in order to staff bylaw. As ASAP.
Mr. Blackwell.
So yes, um, there was a hope to get, there was a, there was a tension to get it out in front of us. This early, but there were several moving pieces that kind of made us be able to hold the trigger as early as we hoped around by law enforcement. The good news though is that council has made some big decisions around. How that service is provided. And I think it's going to go a very long. So there will be results, and there'll be no more gap, seasonal gaps in bylaw coverage. There'll be one permanent full time by law enforcement person that would be boots on the ground by months of the year. Too high season times, they're gonna be. Doing the bylaw enforcement function proper. In the slower periods where there aren't quite so many hikers and so forth. Their emphasis would be on other things like education, so forth, uh, resource, that sort of thing. So we are in the process of interviewing this week for the permanent position. Our goal would be to have a bylaw enforcement of certain place for two first, it's our target, it's our hope. We have parking. Park patrol, whatever the title is, uh, two people that'll be hired seasonally for that. It'll be up to five months, depending on the demand and so forth. So we expect to be fully ready to go very shortly. So although it's delayed. As I say, I think what is important to remember here is that the service that everybody has shifted. And it's a lot more sustainable and responsive to the needs of the community than it was before.
So can I make a comment here? I'm I'm looking at the correspondence from residents. We've seen similar correspondence before. I've heard the people who've stepped up tonight. You know. Uh, the hope that council will follow BDO's recommendation and remedy the problems. This comes up time and time again. Uh, I really think it's time for this council to show some contrition and humility and. Resolve to do better and address these concerns. And, you know, there's a piece of correspondence at the at the very end from a resident. That pretty. Clearly tells us that another thing that we do need to do, which is to pay attention to the basics. And I I'm glad to hear that we're going to be having bylaw in place. I know from driving around the village that. That we have a mess and I do hope that we have this in place very soon and that we do need to pay attention to these basics. People's lives are being impacted and it's only going to get worse. So I think that we need to do much better and get these things done.
Counselor, can I ask anything else?
I think that's.
Okay. Proceed then. Item number fifteen, new business, new business.
We've done that on a.
Extra pause.
Just in case there's any more to this.
Okay, we'll move right to questions. Any further questions from the gallery? Any online?
Um, no.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn the open portion of the. To move any files. Okay, second, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Okay, thank you very much, gallery.